September 16th, regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Did you want to do the roll, Lisa?
Chair Elaine Barton.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick believes.
Here.
Commissioner Eric Brenner.
Here.
Commissioner Rick Gelbman is absent. Okay. Commissioner Rick Gelbman.
Hello.
We'll take that as a here.
Yeah.
Vice Chair John Mungy.
Here.
And we have the Council Liaison Lisa Wong, who's not here yet. And Commissioner Andrew Weiss is not here. And Commissioner Alan Worm.
Alrighty, thank you. We have a quorum. So first item of business is to adopt the agenda. So unless anybody has any corrections or changes, I'll entertain a motion to do that.
Move by Al.
Second by Rick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. But now I have to backtrack for a second because I didn't turn my page quickly enough. But one thing I would like to do is just rearrange the item just a bit because Carrie Urbanback is here and she has just a quick five-minute presentation on the use of the new Civic Board system that we use now for agendas and packets. So I was thinking, just so she doesn't need to stay through the whole meeting, that maybe she thinks it'll only take five minutes depending on how many questions y'all have. So I'd like to move her up to just under meeting open to the public unless anyone objects to that. Then moving on, we have approval of our August 5th regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Go move.
Move by Rick. Is there a second?
Second by John.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. I suppose I'm supposed to be doing a roll call on all those. I'm sorry about that. Next, we're into meeting open to the public. So if there's anybody here who wants to speak to the commission on a topic that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to come up and do so. And do we have anybody in the Zoom audience, Lisa?
There's no one in the Zoom.
Okay. Anybody here for that? If not, did you want to do that now?
Yeah, I can.
You know the drill. Name an address. ID number.
I know, right? And a cocktail in my hand. Chair Barton, commission members, hello. My name's Tom Sonic, 2539 16th Avenue East. And I'm here today just to represent our new Arts and Culture Commission. And we have just gotten underway with that commission. We've had two meetings so far and we've been busy defining what is the purpose of this commission and what are the key elements that we need in order to deliver on that purpose. And one of the key elements that we need is collaboration with different intergovernmental units, including this one. So we're looking forward to working with the Planning Commission on some of the rules and regulations on how we look at, you know, as you're talking about tonight, signage and how we regulate that in the city and will that have any impact as we're looking at adding things like murals to the sides of businesses and things like that. But we know we have a long way to go to build our footing and get our infrastructure in place, but we're really excited to get going. We have a fantastic group of commissioners on this commission. And Lisa Ritchie is also joining us and as is Councilmember Wong. And it's just a really fun group. And we're very, very excited about what we can do to bring art to the city and as really as an expression of the people who live here, so.
Excellent.
Just wanted to get that out there.
Probably not.
And we'll be coming, we'll have the whole commission here probably within the next couple of months just to meet and bug you all a little bit.
My guess is you've already been in touch with Loves. She's talked about.
Oh, I know. Yeah, yeah. Well, we've talked about a mural on the side of her building several times. But again, you know, we need to make sure we have our feet under us and we have some funding in place and have some rules in place to, so we know how to do these things. Any questions for me or the commission? Great, well, thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Just wanted to say hi again and get ready because we're going to be coming here a lot and talking about how things we're going to do in the city. So look forward to it.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll just move on to the Carrie's presentation. It's related to the little handout.
Yeah, I just pulled up the handout.
Did you get the handout?
I'll deliver. This will help you a lot. I've got some people excited.
I got one.
You got one. The council one. I have a question. She's got it.
Thanks for letting me come here and kind of update you on some of our changes that we've done to our meeting management software. As you're aware, we have switched to a tool called Civic Clerk. And I do have to apologize, some of our onboarding has been a little bit bumpy. There's more levels in this tool than we were aware of and that support advised us on. And trying to fix all these things via online chat isn't as easy as we'd like it to be, but we're pretty confident we have everything in place now. So as commissioners, you know, it's really important that you get access, timely access to your agenda, your packet, your meeting notifications. What I've provided for you is kind of a cheat sheet to make sure you have your settings in place so that the city can communicate with you as materials are published. And there's a couple little goofy twerks in there. One of them is you have to opt in to say you receive notifications from the city. And then you only, as board members, if you don't select the correct access levels, you'll get the no meeting available and some of those early issues that we had when we were first launching the site. What I wanted to kind of show you. Let me see if I can share my screen. I'm sorry I have my back to you guys. I can get my. Okay, so I want to kind of go over the different ways that you'll get materials from us. One of them is you are set up in the system as a board member. So we've set up your accounts with your preferred email address. You're in charge of your passwords and stuff. So when Lisa publishes a package, you'll get an email saying your pack has been published with a link to it. You click on that link, that will open up all of your agenda and your packet. That's one way you can work with us. Another way the tool does, and I don't think Lisa, I think Jenny does it for council, but there's another way we could email the full PDF packet to you if that's what you prefer. But I want to kind of show you a couple of different things. One is how it works for our residents because I found a lot of our commissioners and council members are just pleased with the enhanced performance on the city's website. So if you go to the Government tab, and I'm left-handed, major problem my whole life, click on Agendas and Minutes. So this is where Civic Clerk interacts with the city website. And you'll see that this will display here. If you look on this file download link, that's kind of like the old-fashioned way where you can download that, you know, 200-page PDF file and work with it on your desktop. If that's what you prefer, you're welcome to do that. An easier way is, this is how the public views our materials. So you'll click on whatever meeting you're interested in, and then here's your agenda. And then if you click on this tab here where it says Agendas and Files, this will load. Yep. Yes. There we go. So here is kind of another way to walk through the entire packet. So here's your agenda for you. And these little links in here are the items that are in the packet. So if you want to follow along and make your notes like that, you can. When the minutes are approved, they go under this tab here. So of course this. Yep. Oh, I'm not, am I not, oh, I have to re-stop and reshare. Let me stop it and restart it again. Can't handle all my. There we go. So you can open any meeting here from the city. There's your agenda. It's still not working. Well, it's Zoom because I'm here. It's a lovely tool. As lovely as Zoom is, it's a nice way for you to mark through your agenda. The other option you have is to use the Board Portal function. That is the built-in Civic Clerk where you, as a board member, I have your settings to whatever meetings you have access to in the city that you can log in, see your agenda. That's where you can make notes, you can highlight things. So if you really want to, you know, be prepared for your meetings and do some of that pre-prep work, you do it. That, the notes that you make in the Board Portal are your private notes. Those don't go published, those are just like you scribbling in your notepad. We actually did even speak to the city attorney and they're considered private notes in there. So you can be prepared for your meetings and do your notes in that fashion. Some of the other tools that I'm happy to help with is Civic Clerk has a way for us to build in hashtags and different search terms. And I think for Planning Commission where some of your work takes, you know, a while to do, if there's a special project or something, we can build in hashtags in there so that when you want to do your research and go, when did we start talking about this? You know, we can group those things all together into hashtags so that when you want to search on the website, all the documents that are related to that will be at your disposal. We haven't really taken advantage of that feature yet, but I just want to make sure you're aware of it. So as you're working as a commission, if there's some things you want me to add to you, add in the backend for you to make your jobs easier, we're happy to do that. I was available. Email me, text, call if you have any issues. But like I said, the Planning Commission and the City Council were the first groups that we brought up. And the council has a little bit different access than board members do, so I do apologize for some of the bumps on the road. But if you follow those prompts, you should be good. Like I said, we have on-boarded Arts and Culture Commission with these instructions and we've on-boarded our Police Civil Service Commission. So we've brought a couple of commissions on with these prompts, so.
When I send, when I publish a packet and then I indicate to email, you know, that function right under Publish, does that only send them the link?
Yes. Sends them the link to the PDF.
Okay. And so you said Jenny is sending a PDF?
She's doing the same function. She's sending the link to them. If people want the PDF, the easiest thing would be we'd go to the website and download that monster packet.
Okay. So with that being said, if the group would prefer that I do that, I can do that. I'd need to, I guess, the majority, because I want to do the same for whatever I'm doing for the commission, I want to do it for the entire commission. But with that being said, you would not have that feature of utilizing the functions within Civic Clerk for the hashtags and whatnot.
Well, the hashtags will kind of come in as we get to the search and the backend. But, you know, again, I've got, I know on the City Council, everybody uses this tool differently and it's kind of what your comfort level is and what you like. And we're here to work with you to make sure that the way you like it is the way you are getting your information.
Did everybody get an email regarding when the packet was published? The Planning Commission packet was published last week? Everybody set up for that?
Yeah, I got a link.
Yeah.
And it appears I was able to get there, but when I got there, there was no agenda or no packet.
Yeah, I think there's an error in your account somewhere. And so if we can work through these steps with you, if that doesn't work, I'm going to have to go to support. But I, you were one of the early adopters who signed in quick and I think there's just, there's probably a trigger in your account. I'll have you go through this first. Again, it's privacy. I can see certain things on your account that you can't see, that I can't see, and then we'll go in. And if that doesn't work, we'll get support involved.
Okay.
But you should always be able to go to the website. Worst, you know, worst-case scenario.
I tried going to the website too and wasn't able to find it there.
And you were causing me much stress while I was in Orlando. I was worrying about you and your packet. Because you should always be able, the website's kind of your backup. Like, you know, if you're desperate, you should be able to go to the website.
I hope you weren't on a roller coaster at the time. That'd be double stress.
No, I didn't have time to go on the roller coaster. It was pouring rain, so that wouldn't have been my ride of choice.
She was dancing like a flamingo, though.
I did some flamingo dancing, but there's no video. We're good.
So did everybody else get?
Everybody got their notifications, okay?
Did everybody else set up for the email notification?
I have been, and I have been getting bounce back on Andrew Weiss's email, which is very odd because it seems like it's an intermittent error message. Most of the time he gets them, but occasionally I'll get a error back from him.
How about you? Are you getting it?
Yeah, look over that and then if that doesn't work, shoot you an email as well I can break up your account. But I do know for a fact that some of the planning commissioners, unfortunately, they bring up this huge list of selections of things you want to be notified for, but because of the board access, you only have access to certain ones. And I know that's what triggered the, kind of the no access to the meeting notifications that some people were getting. But I, again, you know, I'm here, call me, I can log in, I can take a look. If we can't figure it out, we'll get support involved. But, you know, our primary objective is to make sure you guys have the materials, you need to do what you need to do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? I'm okay. I mean, I think we should get it to the point that it's working.
Yeah. My biggest concern is people who say they can't access it.
Yeah.
Because the rest of it's kind of your choice on how you want to use the materials that the city sends you. But you first have to be able to get your hands on that agenda.
Well, particularly because people can go and get, go another route if they want and go to the website and just bring up the PDF if they choose. But I, yeah, I don't like the idea that people aren't.
No, that caused me much stress. And I go, Lisa, are you sure it's published? And she's going, yes, it is. But, you know, I was chatting with the mayor today and I kind of liked being an hour ahead of the rest of the city, so I'm thinking about permanently relocating to the East Coast.
You can tell us what's going to happen.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I really, there were some things in the city that I was glad I was an hour ahead of.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And then you, everybody has your email, right?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent.
Hope so.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right, thanks.
All right, then we'll move on to our public hearing, which is a request for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage. So we'll have the, we'll have the staff report. If the planning commissioners have any questions on the staff report, they'll be able to ask Eric, our planner. If the applicant has anything they want to add, they'll have an opportunity to do that. And at that point, we'll hear if there is anybody from the public who wants to provide input. And after that, we'll just discuss the item and make a recommendation. So Eric, are you ready?
No, because Carrie has the option. I am ready now, yes. She has stopped sharing.
Okay. No, I did. That's why I read the panic.
Thank you. Well, tonight we're talking about Century Avenue Collision Center located at 2501 Division Street North. As I'm sure everybody's aware, that street changes names, so they are located on Division Street. They are requesting a conditional use permit and I will go into a little bit more detail So background, we've kind of abbreviated Century Avenue Collision Center as CACC here. But they're requesting a CUP to expand their existing outdoor storage area from about 48 under square feet to about 96 under square feet. The site is zoned MU3. The applicant's plans state that he's going to replace the existing asphalt this year and move the fence to increase the storage area. It would allow him more space and the intention is to mitigate thefts that are occurring on the property. So here is a picture of the existing property. As with many places in the city, businesses occupy multiple lots. You could see where the existing outdoor storage occurs. Regarding the dimensional setbacks, nothing's changing to Century Avenue Collision Center. So the lot size is staying the same, the lot width, front yard setbacks, all the setbacks, the height of the building, they're all staying the same. We have an existing business, which is a business that is operating without a conditional use permit. This is fairly common in the community. But what they are asking for is a CUP for the outdoor storage. So we are reviewing the outdoor storage tonight, not Century Avenue Collision Center. In addition to that, there is the provision of a site plan review, but site plan review only happens when a industrial use, commercial or industrial use is expanding by more than 1,000 square feet. So the use itself is not expanding. We are reviewing the accessory use, the accessory to the principal use of the Collision Center, the outdoor storage. Outdoor storage is, as shown on this table, an accessory use and it is conditional within the MU3 district. There are three standards for outdoor storage. The storage shall be located outside of the front yard. The storage shall be completely screened from adjacent streets, public walkways, public parks. And then finally, the screening shall occur from abutting residential uses with a wall, solid fencing, evergreen hedge or equivalent. And so we'll go over those in more detail here in the presentation. So basically, the red line shows the existing storage and the green line shows where the applicant is requesting the new fence to increase, again, that accessory use of the outdoor storage. Essentially, more pictures showing the same thing. The large fence area is between 12th and 13th Street. There is the former alley shown there. Here's the existing fence. The applicant states that it will be a similar fence installed of a six-foot cyclone fence with vinyl slating. When we discuss the compatibility with the surrounding areas, we do have the residential use of the senior living to the, to the east. So we are talking about the screening. Here is a picture of the existing landscaping that was installed in the residential property. The applicant is proposing the six-foot tall vinyl fence with the slats to provide that 100% opaquacy. And then the use and appearance is compatible with the adjacent properties. They are not proposing any addition to the principal use, so no changes are occurring to the number of employees. The proposed increase in outdoor storage will have no impact on the existing parking occurring at the site. There's, the use is not increasing, the principal use is not increasing, and therefore is not generating any additional demands. Landscaping requirement is for the principal use, that is not expanding. As we stated, as I stated earlier, the site plan review falls in when there's 1,000 foot, square foot expansion of that principal use. The drainage and natural resources, there are no changes, so, but still, the applicant will need to make sure that they get the appropriate permitting from those agencies if needed. And there are no proposed alterations to the existing pedestrian ways or adjacent public right-of-way. The applicant is not proposing any modifications to the accesses and they are not proposing any changing to their existing light fixtures. So the three standards we have for the conditional use permit is that the outdoor storage is located outside of the front yard setback. Front yard setback would be off of Division Street. This would be located on the west side, so it meets that first requirement. Second requirement is that it's completely screened from the adjacent streets. That will be done through that six-foot chain link fence with plastic slating. And then finally, is the screening done to the adjacent property? The residential property itself has landscaping, but the new outdoor storage will have that six-foot fence with vinyl slating. And then finally, consistency with other plans. This complies with the comprehensive plan, but to discuss the redevelopment master plan, this is in the Commerce Park Redevelopment District. It states that improvements are allowed to protect private property and remain competitive in the short term. This is not increasing the value of the building, the principal use in any way, so it's not creating a new impediment to any future redevelopment plans. So the staff is recommending conditional approval of the conditional use permit with these two conditions. The first being that they get all the appropriate permits that may be required. And then secondly, that the screening fence shall be six feet with the vinyl slats and the vinyl slats be inspected annually and any replacement needed occur within 30 days. So with that, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Go ahead, Rick.
Okay. Eric, one question I had is, in the additional area that's going to be fenced in, are we, are they planning to change the amount of paved area?
The applicant has stated that he is replacing the existing pavement, but that if you want additional information on their improvements, he's available here to talk.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like that when, when we get to that point.
Okay.
I have a question about the condition two.
Mm-hmm. Patrick, is your mic on?
Is my mic on?
No. My mic is on. Condition two, referring to being inspected annually, is that inspected by an outside source or inspected by the owner? This one does not require an outside source, so the owner could be meeting this condition, but as written, it doesn't state who it is.
Anyone else on the report? Okay. The applicant is here. Did you want to add anything to the report that we heard? If so, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and speaking into the mic. No. And just give your name and address as before, if you would.
My name is Jim Seon. I'm one of the owners of Century Avenue Collision. The real estate's actually also owned by my partner, I, under a different name, Seon Madison, so we own both. Pretty much everything Eric said, I think, is true. Regardless of your question, we're currently in, well, you can see on the picture, maybe not, but we're currently on schedule for August. We can see how that worked out. But with Shiskeys to have the blacktop replaced. And then actually, if we redo the fenced area, we, that's the reason we'd like to do this now, is actually the existing area and the new area, the grade back there, it kind of fluctuate because over the years, there used to be an alley that was abandoned there and stuff like that. So Shiskeys has mentioned that now would be the time, as long as we're redoing everything else, to go in there and regrade it. And then at that point in time, yes, our intents, our intentions are to blacktop the entire fenced-in area right now. I mean, granted, we're looking at a huge expense already this year with the blacktop, but we were planning on redoing it. Right now, the old area is currently blacktopped and we would be basically redoing both the old and the new area.
And the newly fenced area to the south?
Correct.
Is that currently paved?
No, that currently is in gravel.
Okay.
So that would be.
And then are you applying for a permit or talking to the watershed district?
We, I asked you up until tonight, I didn't realize that was.
I'm not sure what their requirements are, but it seems like a significant amount of area that's being, becoming impervious. And, you know, I think for our city, we've got to be more sensitive to.
Well, that's understandable. Like I said, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't read the, I didn't realize the packet was online for me to view or something, so I apologize for that. But I don't think it'll cause any adverse drainage that's probably not already happening, if you will. As far as the landscaping, like you said, the, I keep calling it the nursing home, but the senior center, whatever you call it, they've planted a number of evergreens already for future growth there, so that'll take care of the blockage of site or anything like that. And then the fence we're talking about doing is, we'd like to do basically the same kind of fence we have right now with the same type of slats because it matches the color of the building and stuff like that. However, we will probably not be using the existing fence only because after 20 some odd years, you know, a tow truck or two is backed into a spot or three, would be a polite way of putting it. So it's, it would be more of a headache for a fence contractor to use the existing fabric than to replace it with new one. The plastic slats actually, we've actually had real good luck with their, to be honest with you, a large portion of the slats that we have that have been up there. We added on our building back in 1997 and that's when that fence, I believe, was put up. And so they've held up real well over the years, so I don't think that'll be a problem unless the quality of plastic has gone downhill. As far as timeframes, we're kind of hoping, like I said, depending on the outcome of this meeting, I think Shifsky's is still planning on getting our blacktopping and everything done this year. We're hoping they are. And it would, like I says, would be ideal to do it at the same time that we're doing the rest of the parking lot.
So I would certainly recommend that you talk to, is it Ramsey Washington Metro Water?
I can find out who.
It would start with us and our Public Works and Engineering Department would look at the rules and indicate.
Okay, cool.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Was that done as part of the review? Because we do have engineering comments, so I, or was it not looked, was the paving not all firmed up?
Well, we're looking at this as two separate permits in that this is the conditional use permit for the outdoor storage. Morgan Dolly, the city attorney, did review the submittal, but the pavement, the replacement of the pavement in the driveway is a, is a separate permit through the city and he will be doing the remaining part of the review when that gets submitted.
Okay.
And that gets submitted usually by the contractor, Shifsky's in this case.
Quick question, I think, Morgan's the city engineer, not the city attorney. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
That one didn't sound right. Okay.
So anybody else have any questions? I did want to know if you could just share a little bit about what is stored in this area.
A lot of times in our business, we, well, right now, there's some snowplowing equipment of mine in there, but actually, right now, we store a lot of the vehicles that, once they're being worked on, for example, right now, we're having a huge problem with parts. So you start a vehicle, you get to a certain point and then you have to pull it outside and leave it outside. We have experienced over the last couple of years, a huge increase in theft. We've had a couple catalytic converters cut off, we've had aluminum wheels stolen. It's kind of getting out of hand and that's no, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the city police, they have their hands full, but it's happening all over. So it's to our advantage to have more storage area so that if we have vehicles in there, it increases the probability of doing that. And that's one of the reasons also why we like the fence with the slats versus a solid fence, because right now with the slats, the police department does on a regular basis drive back there at night and shine their spotlight and they can pretty much see everything when you're that close through the slats, if there's anyone moving around or anything like that. But if you put up a solid fence, you know, you could have two, three guys behind the solid fence dismailing a car and unless they dropped a wrench or were talking loud at the time of police officers driving by, no one would know they're there till morning. So it's, it kind of benefits the security aspect of it, not having a completely, you know, solid wood fence or plastic fence or whatever. That's one of the reasons we're going with that.
Okay, no, I was just really more interested because, just because we're talking about outdoor storage isn't, you know, the storage of vehicles or the parking temporarily of vehicles that you're working on. To me, again, we'll have the discussion, but that doesn't seem to fit. To me, that's more just a parking issue rather than a storage thing. So it's just a more a technical question. So I just wanted to clarify what other than vehicles that you.
There's, right now, I have a couple bobcat trailers sitting back there and there's a dump truck and stuff, but eventually, some of that stuff will be leaving. I won't have it there.
Is that associated with your?
With my, well, I also ironically do a snowplowing business. I've been doing that since I was 18, so.
Okay, so that's.
We're getting, we're getting close to, ask my wife.
Okay.
But yeah, there's, there's things in there that we wouldn't want someone to walk away with, would be a polite way of putting it.
Sure, sure. But those things aren't necessarily associated with your repair business?
We use the trailers too occasionally. We have to haul cars in ourselves or something like that. I mean, a lot of it's done by towing companies, but we do find ourselves hauling stuff in or hauling out our scrap metal and stuff like that, so.
Right. Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Shed light, huh?
I would venture that you do, you are, a good guess that you're going to have to get a watershed district permit for that increase and I think that usually has to go before that's more.
Okay.
You might want to get on their schedule pretty soon if you don't pay.
Okay. All right. Unfortunately, the bad thing is, is that the fence contractors have already stated that it would be nice to pave it first because, and regrade it first, obviously, but we can check into that. Worst case scenario, I guess we can just regrade it, but even the grading, we'll have to take down the existing fence and we do worry that we're going to find ourselves in an interim time where, is it going to be a few weeks or a few months with the supply issues today that we're without a fence? And that'll really hurt, so.
Yeah, well, I think maybe that's something that you could help verify with the city engineer, whether it appears that that would be necessary or not, so we'll put that on Eric's to-do list.
Correct. And as I, as I stated in this, Jim is stating, you know, Morgan's already been involved in this conversation.
Right.
So he, he understands the process on the paving side. We're, we're addressing the storage area.
Yeah, yeah. Morgan's been real good to deal with.
There aren't any other questions? You'll still be here if we have more later. Say, thank you.
I'll sit down again. Thank you.
Glad to see you're improving your business like that. It's nice to see that happening in, in nursing.
Actually, yeah, we're doing, I have a few other things in mind, so unfortunately, money is always a big concern, but.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll open the public input portion at 7:09. Is there anybody here? Or on Zoom who wants to provide input?
No one is on Zoom.
No one on Zoom and unless Tom, who's still sitting back there, wants to provide some? Nope. Okay, then I'll close the public input portion of the hearing at 7:09 and we can discuss So, discussion. The one thing I just, I'll clarify why I was asking about what was stored, because if this were simply adding parking area, there'd be no issue at all. You wouldn't need a CUP for that, which is why I was trying to understand what else would be stored as it would relate to the body repair or vehicle repair. So that's why I was asking those questions.
Chair, if I could address that question?
Sure.
I understand your question and I think there could be a gray area. I think this is an easier way to look at it because we still have requirements of license and operability for vehicles. If this was viewed as storage and not parking, we don't have to address those issues, you know, that we understand that it might be there a longer time than otherwise and in a state of disrepair, but will be fixed. So by, by granting a CUP for outdoor storage, we understand that these vehicles might not be the same as a vehicle that would be parked in their normal.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm getting more at the issue of the whole fencing because that's essentially, you know, the biggest piece of this is the fencing and that would make sense. I mean, that, something like that, you do want a level of security, so people can't just walk in and strip some vehicle. So it was more just the understanding what was going to be stored. And the second piece was just, and we had, we've had discussions, lengthy discussions about this before, is the style and the look of it, because in that, that is in the redevelopment master plan, it's also abutting the brand new suite living development. And I just want to make sure that the, that the product, you know, fits and enhances the area. So that was one of the things I was also curious about. And I'm not real sure, I don't, there are no photos or anything of what it would look like, but that's okay, I guess.
We, we don't know exactly, you know, but it's, the existing fence here is a six-foot chain link fence with plastic slat. As the applicant stated, you know, would the color change, maybe, but, you know, he stated that color also, you know, complements his building, but.
The slating color.
Yep.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that is a, a representation of what the applicant in writing has requested.
Yeah, and it sounds like what he said was he would be replacing, probably not reusing the fencing that's currently there. Am I correct? Yeah. Go ahead, John.
I know you're adding, a quick question is, are you going to be doing anything to the lighting? You're getting more fencing, are you going to extend lighting out as far as that yard?
I think we have adequate lighting on our building.
You do? Okay. So fencing now won't add more lighting or anything like that?
No. We don't, we don't have.
I'm sorry, Jim, but for the record, we're probably.
Yeah, if you could come up again.
Sorry about that.
Don't have to state your name and address again, but at least.
No, the lighting, the lighting will, will stay the same as far as we're concerned. We have adequate lighting back there. The storage area, we don't, we don't store like, it's not like a junkyard. We don't keep cars that are half dismantled around for a long time period. You know, it's, our property's too valuable and the space is too valuable to us, so if we have damaged cars, they usually sit around long enough for the insurance companies to decide what they're going to do with them and then they're sent down the road or whatever. So hopefully that addresses that question. The fencing, like I says, we're hoping to use a similar type fence. Like I said, the slats, even now, if, if that fence is taken down, I'm sure the 20-some year old vinyl will disintegrate in the dismantling process. So that's why we would go with the similar type of slats, because we feel they held up real well. So hopefully that answers that question. Yes, any other questions anyone can think of? Maybe, maybe not. All right, I'll sit down again.
Well, maybe before you leave, I will just mention, and this came up on a recent thing as well, is in the MU districts, fence, and again, it's that we deal with fences in a couple of places, but in the MU district, they are only supposed to be decorative, decorative in nature, let's put it that way. And we had that similar discussion recently as far as, you don't want something that you can see through, you know, and we don't necessarily want a wall. So from a, just a aesthetic perspective, what is the look that would be appropriate? So that was just one of the things in the back of my mind as well, as I thought about. Although I know, I think right across the street from you.
Correct.
There's another business that, whose fence.
Yeah, it's kind of half dismantled.
Yeah, half there, I guess.
Let's see how I can politely address this. Maybe I'm not supposed to reference the other, I know, I've, I know that, like the Shifsky's are in the process of putting up a new fence. I think that's the one you're referring to. And I think it's been brought, I think that one, you're right off the bike trail, so you have tons of traffic and tons of people seeing, seeing the property there. So I can see where the council would have one added to there. And like he says, over by our facility, I mean, I've got along great with the neighbors across the street over the years. The property did recently change hands now, so hopefully that'll, in fact, I do know the new owner is actually doing a real good job of cleaning up what's going on over there, so, in his, in his defense. Their fence, yeah, their fence is in a lot rougher shape and, and I have a feeling that's probably going to change on their part because I think they've actually been broken into three or four times now, just since the last owner took possession, like maybe this past March or something. So they're, they're trying to figure out what they're going to do to kind of change their situation and protect their assets over there.
Directly to the north.
Right, directly to the north. It used to be the, it used to be owned by the O'Neill family, O'Neill Concessions, and now it's Cornerstone Concrete that actually owns the building and stuff like that. But like I said, so I kind of understand where you're coming from on that. I think the fence we're proposing would, I think, I think it would satisfy the people behind us. Actually, like I says, it was there kind of even before they built that facility and they didn't seem to have a problem with it. And we, during the construction phase, which, God, that took forever, but we got along great, you know, as far as the contractor and the people who are running it and stuff like that. So I don't think we have any problems with them or, obviously, they probably would have come tonight and presented those problems.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So I think, I think that issue won't be a problem there. So I don't know if I've answered all your questions.
Yeah, it's really just more the look of the area, because as, as improvements or changes are made, you kind of want to increase.
The, the.
Or make the look of the area better, let's put it that way.
The other type of fencing you're referring to, like if you get into the, I think I've seen black or green coated chain link fence or something, or, well, actually, it's plastic coated, I think is what they call it now, or something like that. That typically adds probably 25, 30% to just the cost of the fabric and then, and then you still have to put the, the same slats and stuff in it. I think the slats they would use is a summer, is basically the same product, just a different color, but if you go, I think that fencing, I've only seen it in, I think dark green and black are the two that are probably the most prevalent. So, but I don't know that that would really so much apply to back where we are right now.
Okay, thanks.
I suspect that probably the inspection, the regular inspection, you know, in, in repairs of anything that's damaged is.
And that's fine. I mean, I don't know on how they would do that or how you'd set that up, but I don't see that would be a problem. Like I said, the slats have actually held up real well, so I think if we put new ones in there, I could easily see another 20 years of use out of them, so, provided no one hits the fence or whatever.
Sure.
Chair, pardon. Could I address the, the section of the code that you're citing about the decorative fencing? The, I had a discussion with the city attorney about that and this requirement on the screen when we talked about Shifsky's and his statement was, when two code, two sections of the codes conflict, and in this, it's, you have a decorative fencing of wrought iron or anatized metal, wrought iron is visible and you have the section here requiring the, the solid fencing, you go with the more restrictive. So in this case, the more restrictive would be the solid fencing. So it's not that we're unintentionally ignoring that section of the code, it's, you have two sections of the code, you can't meet them both, which one's the more restrictive and that's the one you need to follow.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure you couldn't meet them both, but that's, that's okay. Thank you. But now talking about, or maybe you can bring this up, Eric, on your screen. I don't know if you can or not, but under the lands, and again, it's just to get a clarification, under the landscaping section of code, I don't know if you can.
I, I can get that up.
Just because it's so lengthy and I don't.
Yes.
Really want to have to kind of paraphrase it. Really want to have to kind of paraphrase it. And it's really the, the one paragraph that deals with when it is applicable.
Yes.
You don't have to stand there if you don't want to.
I'm curious myself, so.
Well, it's easy to see the screen, too, from your position now. Once it comes up.
We're getting, we're getting there. I believe you're referring to, as soon as the shares, item A there.
Yeah, it's that one right there, to be, like, toward the end of that particular paragraph. Because we're dealing with a, it seems to me, and I understand what you're saying, it's a CUP, but it's also an improvement to the site. I mean, it's essentially an expansion of your.
Right.
This comes into not whether the, you know, his permit needs to meet all the sections of the code. This gets into the applicability.
Mm-hmm.
When there is a project that does not meet the threshold of a site plan review, which this one is, the zoning administrator, which essentially is myself, reviews this section of the code. Only when there's a site plan review does the planning commission and city council need a site plan showing, showing how these are met. This is something that can be done administratively, isn't a part of, we're not doing a site plan review.
I understand that.
Yep.
But this doesn't say it's only applicable when there's a site plan review. It says when there's an improvement. That's, that's the only.
I'm, I'm stating it of, is it applicable for tonight's meeting relevant to any conditions within the conditional use permit? And my, my opinion would be, it's not applicable to this discussion. It needs to be met. All the, all the code provisions need to be met. But we're concentrating on the conditional use permit, the, if this was an expansion that would require a site plan review, and that's what we were doing, we would have required a landscape plan, we would have required an architectural plan. We're below that threshold.
I understand that. That's a discussion we'll have at another time.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Just on the recommendation, the, oops, let me find it. There it is. So slight change on the recommendation, it would, the sentence is conditional approval of the requested conditional use permit. I would just add, at 2501 Century Avenue, the address, since we normally include where this is occurring. And I would read it that way, anyway. And on the, the second condition, it says, inspected annually in any damaged or deteriorated slatting shall be replaced. Do we want to say fencing or slatting? You would want damaged fencing, and I'm sure that would be replaced quite quickly, but it would kind of just seem it's not only slatting that's a part of the fence.
That's your prerogative.
Unless anybody objects. Yeah. Okay.
While you're making that, while you're making that change, can you spell slatting correctly?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, anything else, Patrick? Okay, then. Oh, Al, yes.
I'd like to move to give an conditional use permit for outdoor storage.
The conditional, at 2501 Century Avenue North, with the two conditions, one, a slight amendment. Correct?
Al, do you concur with, with Elaine's statement? Do you concur with Elaine's clarification?
Okay. Is there, thank you, Al. Is there a second?
I will second Rick.
Seconded by Rick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. I'm going to do a roll call, as I should have been doing all along. I kind of forgot, because we're masked. And you know what? When you, a couple of us are, and nobody knows who's talking. And their people are backs to the, nobody can tell if you voted or not in the audience. So we'll do a roll call, how's that?
Chair Elaine Barton.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrick Leece.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrick, excuse me, Eric Brenner. Commissioner Rick Gelbman.
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chair John Mungy.
Aye.
And Commissioner Al Moore.
Okay, thank you. So then, this would get on the council's agenda, when do you think?
Understanding his time crunch, it will be on the agenda next Tuesday.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, and maybe you'll be able to get a clarification from the engineer to help with the.
He will be there.
Question.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for coming. All righty, on to commission business action items and recommendations. We don't have anything. On to old business, sign code update. Wasn't anything in our packet that wasn't in there last month, Eric?
And this is, this is unfortunately a, a error on the staff side of, we're still getting civic clerk to.
Oh.
Operate correctly. So I'm going to actually open up civic clerk, in that I had put information in the background section, and I talked to Carrie, it sounds like there was maybe a, a check or something that wasn't checked properly.
Okay.
So we'll send this out again. Most of the background was, was the supporting material. But, you know, like, one of the requests was to talk about the purpose statements. Unfortunately, the purpose statements were in this.
Okay.
This background that didn't get, I guess, checked correctly.
Well, before we get too far into it, then, let me just ask the other commissioners, since we don't have that, except on screen, would you prefer that we move this to the next meeting rather than try to have a discussion seeing it the first time, or having not seen it at all?
I would agree with that. I think tabling it makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Just so that we're, you know, I mean, it seems like this is a critical part.
Yeah.
Is understanding and getting kind of a consensus on what the, what the purpose is and some of those types of things.
Yeah.
I think the rest of the conversation will go a lot better.
Yeah, this kind of drives the whole.
Are all, yeah, are prepared for that.
Agreed.
Chair.
Everybody seems okay with that, unless there's something specifically you would like to cover.
No. The only thing is, you know, that I would say is, you know, we, we talked about the purpose statements, that was not included. We, you know, there's no way we, we could talk about this. The, a couple of the other pieces that we talked about, I'm just going to introduce, because that is, the background material is what was supporting that. But when we were talking about election signs, the state statute reads that election signs, you can enforce your sign code.
Right.
From 46 days before the election to 10 days after the election. So, yes, we, we kind of really dial back any enforcement during that time.
I mean, you can enforce certain things, but not others.
Well, it really gets down to, you should not do any enforcement on any non-commercial sign during that time. You, you can still enforce commercial codes. I just bring that up in that, that shouldn't change what you put in your sign code. This is, this is an exemption, or, that's not the word I'm looking for. This is a, well, essentially, the state law trumps during that time period. So you don't have to worry about what you put in the sign code, because you're just not going to be able to enforce it during that time. And then the last one, which also is in the background material, but we have some additional information about, you know, what other items that you wouldn't normally think about of a sign with text count as signage, and you could still enforce. So we'll get this out with you, with you, or to you. We have the meeting on, I believe it's October 5th? Six, seven, is it the seventh, really? Okay.
Well, according to the agenda.
Yep, yep.
Just pick a date.
But so, we'll, we'll make sure that this gets out, and, and then we could defer that conversation.
Okay.
So that, it's just those two parts I wanted to, to highlight, so when you review the background material.
Well, that, even reviewing some of that stuff might be helpful in thinking about the, you know, the purpose, because we can be thinking about that as well, no question. Yes, Lisa?
Yeah, one thing, you know, thinking about the Arts and Culture Commission and bringing in artwork, what does that mean? And how does the sign ordinance work with that? We'll be pretty critical, because we're also thinking, you know, there are several businesses that, you know, want to do art, but what does that mean? Does it then become commercial signage, or, you know? So as you review, just really consider what that might mean for the Arts and Culture Commission.
I think that's a great, it's a good timing. Yeah, because, right, if it was, if it was art, it's not going to be bound by the size and location. But if it becomes advertising and not art, it, it does become bound. So, absolutely. We, we need to make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences of, of calling the art a sign, and therefore being bound by those regulations.
Well, and like they say, art is in the eye of the beholder, so.
Yes, but luckily.
It doesn't have to be egregious advertising.
Commercial speech has been litigated through the courts.
Oh, yeah.
Very strongly, so.
Well, even the, the art piece, when it comes to murals, or even just freestanding signs.
Correct.
Statuary, or you name it.
We gotta just hope that the sign ordinance, sign ordinance isn't in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Too bad there was a little, I wondered about that, and I thought, oh, maybe you just didn't get to it.
No, it, it is a little unfortunate of, this software has its own formatting rules. So it, it took a little bit of work, but I thought, we have this new software, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, give it a try, and we'll get it to you. Just unfortunately, it wasn't today.
Yeah, too bad. We didn't ask. You would have known. Maybe you can blame partially us. How's that?
No.
Make you feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next item, which is review and finalize the two volunteers for the redevelopment master plan task force review. And Lisa, is it kind of, I'm sorry, Lisa Ritchie. Is it kind of set for Monday evenings at 6:30? Is that?
It hasn't been set in stone, but that is what has been a recommendation coming from the EDA that works really well with that group. And then the council, I believe, as well, because you have meetings, and then you're also on other commissions. So I think it worked for both of those other parties.
Okay. And Patrick, you weren't here when we talked about this last time, so I just want to verify whether you had an interest in participating or not. I think we had three?
Actually, it looks like Rick, Andrew Weiss, John was maybe interested, depending on the time, and then Eric.
I, I saw it in the meeting minutes.
Oh, okay.
And I would say I have plenty to do otherwise, and as long as there's a good.
Yeah.
Representation.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
So now that folks know a little bit more about the evening, the day of the week, and the time, is that going to, would that work for everybody who has shown interest? I'm not exactly sure how to get at, you know, who want, who will do it or not. Okay. So now, Lisa.
Being as that Andrew's not here.
Well, Andrew's not here!
It could be Rick and John Mungy then, because they want to move forward with it.
Is that, is that date, are Mondays? Do we know what day of, what week? Not every Monday.
No, it's not. And there isn't a schedule set forth. We need to form the committee first, and then we'll set the schedule.
So during the first meeting, that will be, I mean, I would think all the participants will be involved in setting the schedule. It's not going to be, say, here it is.
Correct.
Okay. So are you two good to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you, both. All righty. And then we did report, anything else from, on old business? I couldn't think of anything. Not, no, we did the report from staff. Are there any other reports from staff?
Yes, actually, kind of a timely one. We have a guest at the, I guess we could call it still the dais with us, but Brandy.
Oh.
Home, Howe, Howe. She's a new employee at WSB, and I'll let her give a short introduction of herself. But she's going to be assisting me and other clients that I have conflict on Mondays. So she has a lot of experience and would be a very helpful resource for the redevelopment master plan committee.
Okay.
With that, let you give a brief introduction.
I wasn't really prepared for an introduction, but I'm Brandy Howe. I started with WSB on Monday. I have some experience in mostly Wisconsin, but also Illinois and Iowa planning. So this is going to be new for me, this part of the country, or part of the Midwest, rather. I lived in River Falls, and I'm going to be working at WSB for, you know, the foreseeable future. So I'm excited to start with you guys.
Okay, so she'll be an attendee after your meetings when we get an update from our two representatives, too. Don't forget to take your notes.
Lisa, do you have any updates?
I can see you smile, but I think you are.
I am. Anything else, staff? Okay, reports from our council liaison.
Sure, yeah. In regards to the task force, the council members that have been assigned to that are myself and council member Thorson. So both of us will be sitting on those. And then, I think that's kind of what I wanted to talk about, yeah. Am I missing something?
Oh, well, I just realized, you know, I, in the past, I had stole quite a bit of council member Wong's thunder by talking about how applications were progressing. But I'm not sure, until tomorrow, she'll be aware. North High School is actually going on the 21st as well. What has happened since the planning commission public hearing and recommendation was that the city and the school district each contributed 50% to the, a traffic study. And that traffic study arrived at the conclusion that the parking is adequate, provided the St. Mark's Church parking agreement continues. And so that will be part of the packet on Tuesday, and we'll be bringing forward those resolutions for, if you recall, both the conditional use permit and the variance.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad they did one, although still a lot of traffic for that particular area.
Well, there are a number of other recommendations for traffic. The parking component is what I summarized for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the parking component, little piece of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I just remembered one more thing. We're working on our budget right now and finalizing that, but there was discussion about, and this is probably more pertaining to the downtown, but parking concerns there. And there was the addition of parking lot into the CIP, or the capital improvement project. So maybe electrified parking spots in that parking lot behind K&J. So there's a lot of discussion about the need for parking.
Yeah, that desperately needs to be fixed. That's hazardous walking in that parking lot. Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff or the council liaison? If not, on to reports from commissioners. Eric, we'll start with you.
Eric, it pains me to learn that we are not your only club. No, just a quick note on the Minnesota Water Resources Conference is coming up here in late October, October 19th and 20th. It's two full days. It's, let's see, if you guys are interested, it's virtual this year, again, due to pandemic. It's on Zoom, and there's some networking we can do via Slack, program Slack. I serve on the planning committee for it, so I'm the main representative on it. We work with watershed districts, other state agencies ourselves, and it's two days of presentations from researchers, consultants who've done work in watersheds, different water projects, hydraulics and hydrology. So if any of you guys are interested, it's 95 bucks before September 24th for an individual, and 120, $120 after the 24th. So just throwing it out there as a shameless plug.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
I have no report.
Okay. Alan?
I'd just like to announce that the Toy Lady is going to be a grand marshal in the parade on September 23rd.
I saw that. It's a nice honor.
Carried in a good write-up in the North St. Paul News this month.
What time is the parade on the 23rd?
6:30, I think.
6:30? Okay. John?
Nothing at this time.
Rick?
Silver Lake Fall Cleanup. We've started doing a fall cleanup as well as a spring cleanup. It's the 18th through the 25th, I believe. And it's called self-guided, so there's bags and gloves and things like that available. There's a sign out, so if you're interested in kind of sprucing things up before the winter, choose a time that fits for you, and you can do a little cleanup. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. I actually don't have anything, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by Al. Thank you, Al. We missed you last month. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? We're adjourned at, the light's in my way there. Thank you. 7:43.